And hopefully, the story will help these young women beat any obstacles in their paths to becoming whatever they dream of becoming. I'm Anna Margos for LA This Week.
The event was hosted in partnership with the White House Initiative on Educational Excellence for Hispanics and African Americans and USC. Well, as you just saw, anyone can become a NASA engineer or even the next Bill Gates, but sometimes, a little help can go a long way. That's why the City of LA recently sponsored a hackathon, inviting kids from disadvantaged areas to consider careers in computers. Gil Reyes shows us.
Yeah, like, I really love coding and being creative and, you know, building apps and websites, helping other people.
Eleanor Trunav is among 300 young people gathered in groups to learn the basics of computer coding and app development. Their teachers today are tech industry professionals from companies like Snapchat and Google. The goal for these kids?
Hopefully get a good job in the future in technology, but most importantly, learn how to solve problems in their communities with technology.
Today's exercise is creating apps to help solve problems on campus, like littering, smoking, and school fights. Welcome to the Teens Exploring Technology: Hustle and Code Hackathon. The mayor's office holds the event in South Los Angeles for a reason.
Certain areas of Los Angeles, such as South LA, Watts, Boyle Heights, Pacoima, and other areas where you don't have traditional technology company clusters, a lot of those clusters now are in downtown Los Angeles, Hollywood, and the west side. And what we're really trying to do is make sure that the tech economy is spread all throughout the city, in every different area of the city.
Latinos and African Americans are underrepresented in technology fields. This hackathon aims to attract more of them to the industry. Student Edward Hernandez wants to create a video game one day.
But that game will secretly teach kids what to do in life, like life choices.
I think coding is important because it's the next language of the universe, pretty much. You can create anything, and so it's empowering for kids to know how to use these skills to create whatever they want for the future.
Solving problems, improving communities, and making tomorrow a better place. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
More opportunities for teen techies are available. Log on to exploringtech.org for more info. Well, floats, bands, equestrian, and dance groups were all part of the grand celebration to honor the legacy of one civil rights leader. Rasha Goel has more on an event that drew a huge crowd.
Thousands of Angelinos of all ages lined up to celebrate the 32nd Annual Kingdom Day Parade in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., near Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Western Avenue. This year's theme, "Now More Than Ever, We All Must Work Together," was something many attendees said was appropriate.
Really, given recent events, MLK Day is kind of an opportunity to celebrate a black historical figure and to celebrate a unity of a community.
In 1983, legislation was signed to create Martin Luther King Jr. Day, making it a federal holiday. Then, in 1994, Congress designated the holiday as a national day of service.
Today is a celebration of our ability to come together and overcome hate, to overcome division, and to overcome inequity. Today, we mark a point in history, but also, we look at it as a guide to the future.
The parade was followed by a festival at Crenshaw Boulevard and Verdun Avenue, continuing the celebration of the dream Martin Luther King Jr. still inspires today.
We're celebrating Martin Luther King with the people in Los Angeles.
According to officials, the event is the nation's largest and oldest Martin Luther King Jr. Day celebration. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The event is put on by the Congress of Racial Equality of California. Well, if your child goes to school in North Hollywood, he or she now has a new, safer way to get there after a tragic accident inspires action. Gil Reyes shows us.
Third graders from Bellingham Elementary School in North Hollywood test out their new neighborhood sidewalk on the way to class.
Because it's not safe to walk on the street because a car can crash a little kid.
And that's what happened here on Laurel Canyon and Archwood Street six years ago. A car ran over and killed 12-year-old Emily Aylman as she crossed the street. The accident also left her friend, another young girl, permanently disabled. The community urged the city to build the 1,700-foot sidewalk where a dirt path used to be. Bellingham's school principal says thanks.
It's incredibly important. If you see the other side of the street where there's just a dirt path, the students were actually walking through dirt or walking directly in the street to get to school, which was extremely dangerous for them.
North Hollywood Councilman Paul Krikorian spearheaded the effort through the Safe Routes to School Program, funded by city, state, and federal governments. And the sidewalk isn't just for kids.
It's bad enough if you're a third grader, but it's really bad if you're a senior, or if you're somebody with a disability, or you're somebody else who has a mobility challenge and walking on essentially a trail.
I think that they're safer now.
In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The sidewalk also has 14 new access ramps for people using wheelchairs and strollers, also 37 new drought-tolerant trees. While a sea of demonstrators take to the streets in downtown LA to show solidarity for women's rights, a street in downtown's Fashion District is about to get a major makeover and celebrating the heroes of the Los Angeles Fire Department for their commitment to helping others. All these stories in City Beat. Observers said Women's March Los Angeles, which drew a massive crowd that filled downtown streets around Pershing Square, was the city's largest demonstration in nearly a decade. A massive crowd marched to City Hall in solidarity with the Women's March on Washington and similar events that were held in cities nationwide. The size of the crowds seemed to eclipse even the expectations of organizers, who estimated at one point that as many as 750,000 people showed up. Organizers stressed that the event was a nonpartisan and not a protest, but a celebration of human rights. The mission statement for the march read in part, "We stand together in solidarity for the protection of our rights, our safety, our health, and our families, recognizing that our vibrant and diverse communities are the strength of our country." City Councilmember Jose Huizar recently joined with other community groups for a groundbreaking on a much-needed $1.7 million Streetscape Improvement Project on Los Angeles Street in downtown's Fashion District. With funding from Metro, the upgrade is part of Councilmember Huizar's Downtown LA Forward Initiative. The plan and design was a collaboration among the Bureau of Street Services, the Board of Public Works, the Fashion District Bid, and Councilmember Huizar's office. The improvements will be made on Los Angeles Street between 7th Street and Olympic Boulevard. A group of Los Angeles firefighters were honored at City Hall for volunteering their time last year to fight massive fires that swept through Israel. LA City firefighters worked hand-in-hand with Israeli first responders battling blazes in Israel last November.
Any chance we get to recognize the bravery and the heroism of our firefighters, we take that opportunity.
It was all worth it. This is all volunteer for us. Basically, the outcome was that we could participate in being with the firefighters and helping the people of Israel.
Well, it's a different spin on the musical Aladdin. Gil Reyes takes us behind the scenes of a bilingual edition of the Disney classic.
We are at rehearsals for a new version of Aladdin, co-presented by the Office of LA City Council, District 1.
In this town of Agribah, everyone spoke Spanish and English. They were bilingual. When Jafar, the bad guy, got the hold of the lamp, he made a wish to divide the community so he could have more power. So everyone in the palace speaks only Spanish. Everyone in the pueblo only speaks English. So Jasmine and Aladdin cannot communicate.
Can the pair live happily ever after? You'll have to watch and find out in this dual-language adaptation of Disney's Aladdin, now playing at Casa 0101 Theater in Boyle Heights. The musical premiered in Texas in 2009.
We presented it there, far Texas, at the high school. And we had over 1,000 people show up to that performance. It was really exciting. And it's so wonderful to see it now continuing on.
With LA-based players switching between English and Spanish throughout the show, Valeria Moldonado is one of the actresses cast as Princess Jasmine.
I have to sometimes remember that this is something new and that some people aren't used to changing languages. I think there's a big community here where we're all just used to doing this. So it feels really great to now bring it to an audience and see how they react.
For me, it's kind of been, you know, just like a growing experience. Outside of here, I hardly speak any Spanish. So naturally, jumping into this process, it was kind of just like, uh, okay. A whole new world. Será fantástico encontrar nadie que diga no. A donde ir aquellos que se llaman.
The show continues through February 19th. In Boyle Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
For tickets and showtimes, log on to casa0101.org. Well, celebrate Chinese culture during the New Year Festival, step into the land of wizards for a Harry Potter scavenger hunt, and if you love the movie Pitch Perfect, you won't want to miss this in this week's Things to Do. In celebrating over 100 years of tradition, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles presents the 118th Annual Golden Dragon Parade. With over thousands and thousands of individuals lining the parade route and thousands viewing the telecast each year, this colorful celebration along North Broadway in Chinatown has become the premier cultural event in the Southern California Asian-American community. Since the mid-1980s, the Golden Dragon Parade has expanded to include almost two dozen floats, multiple marching bands, government officials, various dignitaries, entertainers, local business leaders, and cultural groups. The parade theme emphasizes ethnic diversity, Chinese culture, and exposure to Chinese-American businesses. The festival takes place Saturday, February 4th at 1:00 PM at 943 North Broadway. For more, visit la-goldendragonparade.com. Join Watson Adventures on a unique Harry Potter-themed scavenger hunt for kids 10 and up. Follow in the footsteps of young wizards on a field trip to the Getty Center in search of art that echoes characters, places, and enchanted objects in the famed Harry Potter books and movies. Keep your trusty wand handy as you track down a powerful sorceress, a snake-like potions master, flying owls and dragons, hagrid-like giants, centaurs, and unicorns like those you'd seen in the Forbidden Forest. This hunt is designed for kids and adults to do together. Go on an adventure on February 4th at the Getty Center. For more, visit watsonadventures.com. The Los Angeles Acapella Festival is a nonprofit music festival that gathers people from all over the world in an academic forum to celebrate, appreciate, and advance vocal music as an art form. The festival consists of educational workshops, a scholastic competition, and a professional showcase. The competition will feature top high school and collegiate groups going head-to-head in a three-round performance format, think Pitch Perfect. The festival is the perfect family event and an incredible weekend of live acapella music. Visit la-af.com for details. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel
1A, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, L, M, N, and O, per department request.
Okay, so then without objection, that shall be the order. Continue.
Item number one is an item noticed for public hearing, sir. There are cards, however, all the items are either received and filed or continued, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, this continue, go, move on to the next set of items.
Items two through four are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members? I don't see any, so why don't we prepare to vote on these items? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
You have an eyes.
Items five through 11 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on item eight, nine, 10, and 11, sir.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
You have an eyes.
Okay, thank you. Let me look to Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr., would you be ready, because now we're in the presentation portion?
Colleagues, thank you all for being here today. Standing with me are some outstanding community members. Rochelle Holt, the president and owner, also Danielle Starkman, the vice president, Rochelle's daughter, and I believe we also have Shannon Sanchez, the operations manager of Godiva's Secret Wigs. In 1997, Rochelle Holt, a divorced mother, was searching for a meaningful business venture which would not only help people but make them feel better about their appearance. Having always been fascinated with wigs for men and women, she mixed her need for meaningful work with her passion for wigs and their effect on appearance. She started Godiva's Secret Wigs in February of 1997, selling hair at Sunday flea markets and mall kiosks in Woodland Hills and in other areas out in my district. And Danielle Starkman, her daughter, has been a major part of Godiva's Secret Wigs since age 13. Pretty amazing, helping her mother with sales. And now Danielle is vice president of Godiva's Secret Wigs and provides a tremendous support for her mother and for the business. And it is more family members than just Rochelle and Danielle. Dean Scott, her son, Rochelle's son is here today, along with Danielle's husband, Brian, their photographer. Sherry Aylman, Rochelle's niece, is their purchasing agent. Rochelle's sister, Sheila Corey, is a retired wig stylist. Takes a family, takes a village. We're here today, which is only 10 days shy of their 20th anniversary of the opening of Godiva's Secret Wigs, which is pretty amazing for any business to last that long. But when I tell you a little bit about the impact that they've had, not just on sales and business, but on our society, I think you'll be even more impressed. So Shannon Sanchez, the operations manager of Godiva's Secret Wigs, discussed with my staff, described, was talking about some of the amazing work that they've done. And she told us about how, she asked how we could help wig wearers become more recognized for their strength and their newfound pride. We decided Wig Wares Empowerment Day would be a great way to recognize a concern that many others have overlooked and sort of bring it out of the shadows. We're happy to make Wig Wares Empowerment Day to distinguish from, you know, there's something people talk about Wig Day, which is about, you know, wearing fun wigs. But today, we're talking about folks who have to wear wigs of necessity, who may be suffering from a number of medical issues, in which wearing a wig can really impact your self-esteem. I want to thank Rochelle, Danielle, Shannon, every employee at Godiva's Wigs for your hard work and dedication and taking this product and really dealing with a cause that's unrecognized around the country. Many women, men, and children live with hair loss associated with a number of ailments. Stress, congenital hair loss, chemotherapy due to cancer and other medical reasons. Members of my family have had to go through that. I'm sure many of you have had members of your family go through that. Many people facing these issues want to maintain a level of normalcy in their day-to-day life and not let hair loss be the defining trait and mark them as someone who is undergoing medical treatment. Living with hair loss can be very detrimental to a person's psyche, and ways of remediation are necessary. Over 90 million women in this country live with hair loss, and many feel vulnerable and have issues of self-image. In many cases, finding a wig to wear can be an important addition to the life of someone experiencing hair loss. With a new wig, an individual can feel more confident about their appearance, and their self-esteem can store. The type of work done to help individuals experience the side effect is profoundly important. Even just bringing a smile back to someone's face to walk into a room and provide positive energy just because of the fact that they finally are able to deal with that hair loss can improve their outlook on life. So I want to thank Godiva's Secret Wigs for providing excellent service in the West Valley, and really, your reach has extended well beyond that, and for paying extra attention to providing compassion to people who are experiencing these type of difficulties. To be able to show support and direction to individuals at such a sensitive juncture in their lives is a phenomenal feat and one that deserves recognition. So thanks for being here today to learn about the need for wigs, the empowerment of folks who need to wear those wigs. Thank you for Godiva's Secret Wigs of Woodland Hills for your important work and for making, for your initiative to help educate people around the city of Los Angeles about this topic, because you've gone way beyond of just a business. You really have become part of the community, and you've helped so many people, and I know many of them who've talked about, you know, the impact that you guys have had and the sensitivity that you have in dealing with this issue. So toward that end, wanted to give you a certificate, two things. One, this certificate about Wig Wares Empowerment Day, which recognizing that, so please accept this. And then secondly, something for Godiva's Secret Wigs for your business as well, to recognize 20 years of service. So let's give it up for Godiva and for Wig Wares Empowerment Day.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Do you want to say a few words? Rochelle would like to say a few words, please.
Hi, thank you so very much. I want to thank my family for being here with me today. And who would think that 20 years ago, a thought out of my mind would end up in women worldwide being empowered with our wigs? We've grown to stores in Thousand Oaks and Woodland Hills, and we have consultants now all over the world. I started with $3,000 borrowed money. So I'm very, very excited. And we teach our clients all over the world and locally through 100-plus videos on YouTube that wearing a wig is as easy as this. And this is what makes them feel better. So our clients wear their wigs for fun, for their career, they're going through alopecia challenges, a bad hair day, even a divorce, and especially through chemotherapy and radiation. There are so many separations and divorces there. So Wig Wares Empowerment Day is really going to help our wig wearers everywhere be able to share their experiences with their coworkers at the dinner table, at their places of worship, everywhere, and we're happy to be here to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now...
What'd you want to say?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, before you, could I, Mr. Bloomingfield, could you hold a second? Mr. Corretts?
Well, I just wanted to say, I went through this in the 80s with my mother, who eventually died of pancreatic cancer, but she had a year of chemotherapy treatments, and having access to a wig certainly was the only thing that made her feel comfortable going in and out and about, not of the quality of the wig that you were wearing, which I think fooled everybody in the room. But still, I think this is a great idea. I'd like to recognize you for your good work, and thank you, Bob, for bringing this forward.
Mr. Sadio?
I too went through this with my wife, and I just want to say thank you. And it was an option, and it's really just important, Bob, you laid out every element and component of what people deal with and engage. It's an incredible sensitivity at times when people are going through chemotherapy. And so, on her behalf, thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, behind me is an army and a force to be reckoned with. This is one of not only the best and the sharpest and the most tenacious grassroots organizations in the San Fernando Valley, but they're great partners and family. And it's the Old Granada Hills Group, and they were formed during the Valley Secession Movement. They felt they needed a voice, and for those of you that may or may not know, I was really involved in that effort as well. In fact, I was one of the consultants that was brought onboard by then Burt Bachmann and Richard Katz and many of the others to help that movement and watch this group grow into what they've become. And in fact, in their first meetings in 2001, hundreds of people showed up. And since then, every single, not only candidate for office, but every candidate for mayor has always come to them, the police chief and many others. And the issues that they have taken on have been all about protecting the unique quality of life in Granada Hills. And with that, for those of you that don't know, it's the Mayberry of Los Angeles. It really is. And we like it that way, and that's where I live, too. In fact, one of our most recent accomplishments was putting in a town clock. You know, this stuff still happens, and we did it without a DeLorean. And so, and with that, we also, I mean, we get together to figure out, what are we going to do on a corner to light the tree for the holidays and spend a lot of effort doing that? We honor the traditions of having our annual parades and collecting fruit for the homeless and citrus sundae and taking on so many projects. But the root of this group is really about protecting the quality of life. And we get together often and regularly to talk about protecting, whether it's development projects and when. I'll tell you, their success rate is unparalleled. We've gotten involved in taking on massive developers, people that had projects they were bringing in that were by right, things like shopping centers that we really made a huge difference on, that became a major issue, and by spearheading that effort and getting together, created a project that we all really enjoy, and it protects that character of neighborhood. An influx of different kinds of businesses that didn't really conform to the community, and we've taken those on and shut them down. But, you know, we all talk about the things that we accomplish, but you can't do it without the true leaders in the community, and they're all right here. And I want to thank you guys. We take on things like protecting trees, Dodor Trees, by the way. They are a historical property by the city of Los Angeles, in fact, I think the only trees that are protected in that significance, and making sure that they are protected and they don't die on us, and have done a lot in the street fair, emergency preparedness fairs, I mean, they do it all. And so I want to thank you guys for everything, for the commitment that you make to making just this little jewel of the city of Los Angeles, of the San Fernando Valley, and protecting that character, which is so important. A lot of things that, you know, we're still working on together, things like unlicensed group homes and other issues that we're all dealing with citywide. One of the big issues we took on was, we have the largest, this is incredible, a lot of people don't know this, the largest food truck gathering on a regular basis in the city of Los Angeles. And when you come on out and you see thousands of people every week attend this incredible event, it would have been easy to say, you know, we don't want them here. The businesses aren't happy, they leave a lot of litter and debris and trash, there's a lot of congestion, it's not safe, there's not, the infrastructure and the crosswalks aren't there. It would have been easy at that point just to say, let's put up signs and close it down. But no, they said, we like it, except we need to regulate it, come up with a plan and work with the chamber and all the businesses, and that's what these guys do. And now, it works really well. So I want to thank you for all of that. We've taken on fights in terms of trying to save hospitals and, I mean, you name it, we've been there. And in fact, I, there's a dear friend of mine who I've known for many, many years, who is not officially on board or on the board of the Old Granada Hills Group. And I knew her for many, many years, as many of you have, when she was with the San Fernando Valley Board of Realtors and then with Supervisor Mike Antonovich's office, and then she retired. And I was going to all of these events as an elected official, and I often will go to Old Granada Hills Group, and I would see her there, and doesn't live in Granada Hills. And I went to her and I said, well, what are you doing here? You've retired, you don't even live in Granada Hills, and you're here. And she said, because each one of these folks become family, become friends. I mean, that's the relationship that they create with everybody that comes into their organization. Millie Jones, who's here, and I'm talking about right now, who I often single out as my favorite staff member, but yes, but she doesn't like when I do that. All right. So I said I wouldn't put you on the spot. With that, I love you guys, and keep up the great work. And it's just incredible that you do this each and every year. They still have their annual potlucks, where you come together and everybody brings a home recipe and a family recipe and just, you know, talk about family. And you guys are family. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Bouvet, the president, who is also the president of Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council, to say a few words.
Thank you. No prepared remarks. Just want to thank Councilman Englander for the recognition. Millie, of course, working with Supervisor Antonovich, and now with Councilman Englander, has always been a pleasure. Mitch has been a great partner and a great supporter of our organization, and I just can't say enough about how great it's been to work with him, and before that, your former colleague Greg Smith, on any number of projects. Behind me, you see not only members of Old Granada Hills Residence Group, you see members of the Chamber of Commerce, you see members of the Neighborhood Council, you see members of other community organizations in Granada Hills. It all fits together, and we're happy and honored to be one of the groups that works as a family in Granada Hills to get things accomplished. I do want to recognize, as somebody that's not up here, one of our founders who's not been on the board for many years, but is here today, Jim Summers. And I just feel very honored, and I know the people behind me, our secretary, Betty Byers, our past vice president, Bob Biava, Maria Fisk, who's one of our original founders and heads our density and zoning, and of course, Richard Fisk, who's done our newsletter for 15 years. One of the reasons that we're, I think, being honored is we're moving into a new phase, going to an electronic newsletter and changing up our organization a little bit, but we're going to be there for the fights that matter. We're very involved with a issue in East Granada Hills that's actually outside our boundaries, but we want to lend support to those folks who are just beginning to realize that, boom, you can have a huge project in your backyard with very little notice, and very proud and happy to support those folks. So Mitch, again, where are you there? Right behind me. Thank you.
Always right behind you.
Thanks very much.
All right, colleagues, thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I want to just close by saying, communities are great, but they're only as good as the people in them. And at the end of the day, that's why I choose to live where I do, because of these folks, and to raise my family there, because of what they bring to the table and what they do to support it. You know, 1/10 of 1% actually really get involved civically and engage in their local neighborhoods. And this is them, right here, and they've been doing it for many, many years as volunteers, just to help each other. So really, truly appreciate it. Let's give them another round of applause.
Give them another round. Thank you guys so much.
We're going to go over there and pick some picks. Okay, great.
Okay, I'm going to move to general public comic. Candido, I'm going to let you be the leadoff hitter, followed by Lorna Paisley, Marco Juarez.
Good morning, Mr. President. Councilmembers, thank you very much for being here in the San Fernando Valley. First of all, I want to give my condolences to Ms. Martinez. I, for one, saw what a wonderful daughter she was, and again, my condolences to Ms. Martinez. I want to thank Dunn for their wonderful job they've been doing with one of the Neighborhood Councils. There was some acts of violence, and I want to thank Ms. Jamie Parks and Ms. Kathleen Quinn for responding to the request from the stakeholders in regards to some of the issues that were taking place. So again, I know Dunn takes a lot of beating, but they're trying to do their job. And Mr. Wesson, you've done a wonderful job in appointing a young man back here to the 7th District and working with you there, and again, we thank you for that, because I won't mention his name, he knows who he is, he's a fantastic person, he's a person of the community. Thank you, sir.
Tony Wilkinson, that's his name. Okay, so Lorna, please come forward, and Marco, after that, Jim Summers. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you for hearing me out. I don't know how many of you know where asphalt comes from, but you know, it comes from the bottom of the distilling tower when they refine oil, and it is the garbage. It is full of carcinogenic hydrocarbons and heavy metals that can cause all kinds of problems, including neurological. What does the company do with it? It sells it to the city to pave their streets. And that's fine, but what about that pile they dumped up at 8100 Bellboa Place that's blowing all over the valley now? So all these chemicals are there, and at least the pile could be covered, but the pile's not covered. And I'm especially irritated because I collect water, which is getting contaminated, and I'm being the good citizen, collecting my water, and I also have an organic garden, which is very irritating. So please, would you please get that pile covered? I think even you were, you said you might remove it, but that didn't happen, but at least minimally cover it. Ms. Martinez, it's your job, I think, would you get work on that for us, please? Thank you.
Okay, Marco, come forward, sir.
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and the reason I'm here does since I disabled, and I live at 6617662 Trifulton Avenue. We've been trying to find who can help us to stop corruption with city inspectors, and who can protect us since fair housing, HUD, and city inspectors and investigators for the city, they don't want to do nothing to help us. Buildings, we have all the lightings, some of the lightings uncovered, probably that's fire hazard, but basically that's, who can help us to stop all the harassment, intimidation, and retaliation for the criminal management companies? They don't respect our contracts, and they use to go and harass us and make threats to do evictions illegally. And that's the second time I've been trying to face another illegal eviction from these criminal management companies. Last Wednesday, I went to Mr. Corcoran's office downtown, and they told me to come here and to see if someone can do something to help us and make the buildings livable and in the proper condition.
Okay, thank you for coming. We'll try to have somebody address your concerns. Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you for letting me talk. My name is Jim Summers. I'm with the newly revived Granada Hills Alliance. It used to be the Granada Hills Alliance for Smart Growth. We're throwing that away because we're uniting our district, our area, Councilman Englander, with our environmental problems, which include the dump, and it also includes the gas leak, the gas blowout. There was a big meeting the last two nights, and I see how much our people are suffering there. They're our neighbors. Anyway, we have a long list of these. I got 27 seconds. Sunshine Canyon Landfield, Dodor Trees, Gas Phil, Horse Properties in Chatsworth, overbuilding, Radiation in Santa Susana, Woodland Hills are going to build a stadium. Anyway, I'm asking our councilmen, I don't think you've been on the right side. I'm with that group. I was a co-founder of Old Granada Hills Residence Group, and I'm asking you, just resign, please. There's Measure S coming. Thank you very much. You'll hear more.
Donna Pierman? Come on up. Items 1, 8, 10, and public comic. Come on, Donna. Miriam, you come on. Miriam, you have eight items, 8, 9, 10, 11. Miriam, are you going to speak? Come on. Go ahead.
Okay, number eight. I got to see what's in the sequence here, okay? Number eight, again, folks, that they want to keep asking people, they want to give these rewards, but they don't give them out. So I'm just letting you know that we need to do is to increase our rights and take away gun control and away gun control and bring back our rights as gun owners to protect the people instead of having these rewards. This is absolutely absurd. It's out of line, and, you know, people need to learn to self-defense, okay? We need to train ourselves. We've got all kinds of people coming into our country that have not been vetted yet. So we need to take measures on the Second Amendment for our rights, the pros, to bring it back, because we should not be infringing on our Second Amendment. So, again, we have the technology today, just simply check out people, then you can just let them have their gun rights.
Mr. President, we're veering off topic, I fear.
Okay, Miriam, you can get back on.
Okay, 9 and 10. I know it's the same thing. Pretty much the same thing here, that we need to have a right to self-defense. We need to stop these gun laws, these gun control laws, that inhibit people the right to have a CCW in this state. And it's going to change, folks, because we're going to make it where everybody can have a concealed carry and protect ourselves from bad people, evil, bad people, period. So that's what's going to happen, because that's our right. It was given to us by God, okay? And we have to be careful how you use it, when you use it, where you use it, because the fact is, you don't know where the people are going to be.
Okay, Miriam, get back on an item now.
Go number what? Number 12? Okay, number 12.
Mr. President, number 12 is in the special meeting, so we can't talk about it.
I know, so Miriam, you have to, we're not in that meeting as of yet.
Well, she's the one that's saying it, not me.
I understand, just stay with your items.
Okay.
We'll deal with Donna when she gets up.
Okay, so are we on number 11 now? Number 10? Okay, number 10. Okay, number 10 is the same thing. You people are not paying the award money anyway, so why bother even having these things on here? And the fact is that we still have a right to self-defense, and we have a right to protect our communities, we have the right to back our police, and they'll tell us how we can, what we can do when we are in a situation where it's important that we need to know how to defend ourselves.
Okay, now, hold tight. Hold tight, Miriam. Now, let's give her her minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, now, there's two, really, two items that happened this week, okay? I mean, the fact is that Proposition S is on the ballot, and that we need to repeal Prop Triple H, because it's only taxing a certain group of people that are homeowners or business owners. So this is the bad, bad thing that Mr. Herb Wesson, President Herb Wesson, you put on the ballot, and that was a bad thing you did against certain people, and I'm going to ask people to, out there, we're going to pursue that. This is unfair taxation representation under the U.S. Constitution, unconstitutional to tax certain people under Triple H. I support the sales tax for the homeless, but not Triple H. So that'd be the fair way to go. Everybody's paying for it, everybody'd be fair. But if you're going to be taxing people in Prop Triple H, we're going to have a class action litigation suit, because we don't have, we're going to become homeless instead of a...
Thank you, Miriam. Let's get Mr. James Arias. James, no, wait, no, no, no. I'll call you next, Donna. Let's get Mr. Arias, because I have some photos I need to return to him. Yes, sir?
Yeah, as you can see in the photos, we have unlawful assembly, and the Officer Sergeant, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Hollis, said that he couldn't do nothing because it violated their First Amendment rights. And in the picture, you can see that they completely blocked off the street on both ends. These are vendors. I don't know who organized this whole situation. This was on October 28th. This was for, they were all gathered there for a saint's birthday, Saint Judas, I believe, and nothing was done. And this is all residential area, sir. And the other picture you see with the big tarp, that person was there for two days straight, and that was during the Dia de los Guadalupe's. A huge grill in front of somebody's home with steam just blowing into people's homes from the taco grill. I just, trying to get an explanation, which I can't from any of the captain.
Well, thank you, Mr. Arias. Let me try to find out what was going on. This is the first time it's been brought to my attention. So Donna, you can come up now, and then if I could get you to give this to the sergeants, could you give this back to Mr. Arias, please? Here's your photos. Yes, ma'am?
I see it's 1, 8, 10. Yeah, 1, 8, 10, and public comment.
You're on it, I do have the same numbers. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I want to talk about the liens. It shows that the city council doesn't care about the homeowners. Again, we have a bunch of liens, and that's why we need Donald Trump, because we need to take care of situations like this, because people won't have a hard time of perhaps losing their homes because of liens or at least putting in hardship. So I don't like them. I didn't see any that were excused like usual. You have all the way up to P, so that's just way too many people that have liens. I don't know what the problem is, whether it's a minor infraction. I don't like them, and I think people, let's help out the homeowners. Okay, and we got number 8. Yeah, we got to have, if we had the right to carry and a right to defend ourselves, we wouldn't see, people wouldn't go out there and shoot so easily, because then they wouldn't say, then they wouldn't know if you could shoot back. That most of the time, the police are not going to be there. The police will be there after the event has happened, after the damage was done, of course, because how are they going to know it's going to happen, right? So I think our police are great, by the way. But so that's why we need to defend ourselves, and people are not going to, especially this tear, oh, I didn't put in for the teardrop rapist, but anyway, the people are not going to call in on this, because they may get the reward, but then they'll get killed or their loved ones will get killed. So I don't like number 8, 9, or 10, by the way. And looks like I don't have anything else to say on that, so.
Mr. President, maybe we should go to general public comment for the speaker?
Okay, let's give her a new minute.
Okay.
Okay, go on, Ms. Peerman.
Okay, yes, we need to, everyone, we need to repeal 8, Triple H, and we need to bring in S. This is the way, you know, we're getting to be like a big CRA with the Triple H. It's just replacing CRA. That was just a new way to get a new CRA into this place, so we can have huge, big Taj Mahal, affordable housings that will have only a small amount, 20%, I think, of affordable housing. Well, 80% is high-priced condos, high-priced apartments, and then you'll probably then bring in some extra buildings that are business. So basically, people are going to be out of their house, so we need to, Eric Garci, we need to get rid of Eric Garcetti, and we don't want him to be mayor anymore.
Thank you, thank you. So if I can get now, Mr. Walsh? I've got, I've got 1, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and then your public comment. So if you could share and give him his three minutes?
And the medium shot, not the long shot. Notice, when they get up, they get a medium shot, so we see their faces. But when we get up, we're scumbags, and you give us longer...
On the item, Mr. Walsh?
You don't give a damn. So in other words, when I do this, nobody can see it. I gave him the finger. HollywoodHighLens.org, Jay Walsh Confidential. I know you can't see my face, because they're all scumbags up here, constitutional scumbags.
We're not on an item.
Okay, number 7. Number 7 is, this concerns El Salvador, where a special reception, it's certainly worth the couple of hundred dollars that we spent on El Salvador, special reception. They never speak up for El Salvador against Donald Trump, because they're on their knees sucking Donald Trump's cock for federal funding. Number 8, this is a reward for information, Andres Guzman, $50,000. There's over $1 million in uncollected pension, uncollected rewards, and the one person who tried to get the reward, you blocked it. Everybody knows, if you give information about someone who's been murdered and who did it, guess what happens to you? The gangs kill you, and the LAPD looks the other way. And just, hey, you can destroy my credibility by any of you getting up and mentioning how much, how the reward was, any rewards, 10 of them, 9, 8, what the reward was and how it was collected and how you took the person and convicted him. They can't say this, because this is all unmitigated bullshit. These rewards are bullshit rewards. You might as well make it a million or $2 million reward, because you're not paying it off, because people consider their lives worth more than $2 million. And number 9, okay, these are teardrop rapists, an additional six months, and that's $50,000 too. So it doesn't matter whether you're raped or murdered, it's $50,000. That shows you they have absolutely no intention of paying out these rewards. I'm telling you, and incidentally, I'm not one of these guys that jerk off to the last second. Hey, you take the extra 14 seconds and shove it up your ass.
Do you want your general public comment, Mr. Walsh? You have a minute?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to have a nice separation. Okay, this is Measure S. Measure S stops construction of high-rises for two years. And they're saying, it's going to take away construction workers' jobs. I live across the street from a construction project, 70 feet away. I look out my window every day and see it. It's been for a year and a half. I have not seen one woman, one single woman, working in the construction project. So I just want all you women to know, you're going to vote, I can't tell an Hispanic from a white person from where I'm sitting. I have seen one black person. There's another construction project down the hall. This is ra, the unions are politically correct racists. If you want a construction job, stay out of it, and you're black or you're a woman. The only people who get construction jobs are whites and Hispanics.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler? 8, 9, 10, 11, and general public comment.
Well, they're there. Okay, what do we have? Rewards, yes. So today, we have the teardrop rapist. Well, the motion by Price, yes, and the funds for the $50,000. Where's the $50,000 going to come from? It will come from the special PDQ fund for CD9. Yes, I think that that's what it's called. I hope they catch this bastard, yes, because you know, rapists need to be stopped, and people that rape, 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 they need to be caught, caught, caught. And we're reaffirming the award from almost five years ago? Did you know the statute of limitations is already run? So if they catch this motherfucker, he can't be prosecuted, because the statute of limitations on a felony is three years. You know, Herb, it's three years. Well, you know, like my little 422 bullshit, it's three years, and for Mr. Teardrop, now the statute of limitations has passed, so he got away with rape. And then number 10, from Mr. Price again, this time, why not? It's a shooting, and you know, people rarely get shot in the city of Los Angeles, because it's so safe. You can walk your dog, any street you want, and the little puppy will protect you from the gang members. What's the address this shooting occurred? How did it happen? And when did it exactly happen? Oh, Mr. R is also cosponsoring. Again, it will be from the PDQ fund for CD9 funds. I hope they catch this bastard, too. Then we have the Iron Mountain Records Management Company for storage of city records. Well, I have good news, you do not need this contract. You can cancel the contract, because I have a place that will give you free storage of city records forever. It's the FBI. They're going to give you free storage of city records for life. The FBI will give you all the storage for all your records. All you need to do, like Tom Labonge, is take them, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not allowed to say that, I'm sorry. You need to take them to the FBI, and they will store them for free, saving the taxpayers millions of dollars.
You want your general public comment?
Yes, I did a John Walsh separation. So now, we get to last night. I, the puppet, spent hours and hours and hours and hours at a Liso Canyon State hearing with the PUC and my favorite organization called Dogger. And who the fuck wasn't there? Your councilman from the goddamn Porter Ranch. Englander was not there, supporting women, talking about children bleeding from the nose from the benzene. Yes, the war criminal Mitchell Englander fails to show up over a mere puppet. The people are more important than puppets. You need to get the fuck in the community and shut down Liso Canyon. Shut it down! Shut down Liso Canyon! Shut it down! Shut down Liso Canyon now!
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, you have items 1, 8, 9, 10, 11, and then general public comment.
Well, such release regarding those liens, right? Remember the liens? Remember that dirty word lien? I'll lean on you if you lean on me, but let's just call lien A and B from CD7 unconstitutional, because there's no representation. Let's call that an action of liability on this city to take people out of their goddamn homes. And yes, Herb, I talked about the chimp mug from District 7, but that was for items E and J. I want to see those forgiven. I want to see those squashed, because I'm here objecting on behalf of that public interest that could not be here because of the goddamn rain and that so-called system called a choo-choo or choo-choo, couldn't get them here on time to represent. So on all these liens, I recommend you cease. Now, when it comes to Rule 93, look at me, look at me, I'm so fucking small. Rule 93...
Mr. President, the speaker is not speaking to agenda item.
...is all about the motion of Price and Wesson, taking advantage of the death of Mr. Guzman. For all I know, I'm the next dead person here in LA, because I represent those shootings. Then I go to item 9, a rapist, a teardrop rapist. How does it begin? It begins when you have people in your council having sex with their team, their office, like Jose Weis.
Stay on the subject, Mr....
I'm talking about the teardrop rapist.
Now, Mr. Herman, on the subject.
Now, on item 10, talking about current Price and Mr. Alexander. How the fuck can you not stop the shootings if you don't care to stop it? How the fuck do you care? I got to be so open, because it's just hilarious. You want to offer $50,000 for someone's blood? Goddamn ridiculous. Now going to item number 11, and I like the critic. The critic was right, and his bullshit bull. The critic was right and his bullshit bull because the bull talked about the records. How do you have all these files of storage? And how do you put storage into files and files into storage? You jump, jump over walls to steal it from someone's home like you did with the Encino lawyer, but rather you leave this shit alone like the computers. This way, we have prior and past records to prove that there is no intent of a threat when it comes to storing shit in your goddamn storage. I waived my remaining time, fuck you.
All right, so then, um, we'll now vote on Items One, Eight. No, Mr. Herman, sit down, you waived your time, so you go sit down. You, you waived your time, sit down. Let's, uh, let's vote, no, you're disrupting the meeting now. Okay, let's vote on Items One, Eight, and Eleven. And Mr. Gus, I haven't forgotten you. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, now, that was what, Mr., well, Luigi?
Twelve eyes.
Okay, now, Item Nine, Mr. Gus.
Six, eight, nine. I'm six, eight, nine. You didn't call on my cards.
I only have one.
You have a bunch of mine.
No, I, I have some for the special.
No, it's six, eight, nine.
Well, I'm just telling you what I have. So why don't we start out with this and I'll look for it. So start off with a minute, let me look for, uh, Six, Item Six and Eight. Go right ahead. We're now on Nine.
Okay, wow, wow, wow. You still are losing speaker cards. Uh, okay then, for identification purposes only, Daniel Gus, speaking for myself, for identification purposes only, I have the number two most read article on City Watch LA regarding the worst McMansion in LA in Mr. Rue's district. Regarding number nine, to reinstate the reward for the teardrop rapist, this goes back to 2012. 2012 and you're still offering the same money you're offering for current, for current crimes. What do you expect to be done for fifty thousand dollars in 2017 for a crime that has been, that dates back to 2012? What do they say about doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? Thank you.
I'm going to give you, I cannot find it, but I'm going to take you at your word. You said Items Six and Eight, so can we give him two more minutes? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, I appreciate that. I will keep that in mind. Item number six. Councilmembers, you are on a daily basis, including later today in the special meeting, taunting the federal government. You're practically begging them to defund you in every single way. And you're talking about a bunch of positions where, where no financial analysis has been done. These are grant-funded positions, but later today, you're going to attack Andrew Puzder-
Well, let's get back on this, we'll get to that other item, uh, Mr. Gus.
I am, I'm making the point that you're shooting yourself in the foot on Item Number Six because later today, you're going to impact-
Stay on Six.
I am, Herb, come on.
No, Daniel, stay on Six. I'm going to call you on the other one when I go into the special.
Okay, then, then watch, you are shooting yourself in the foot on this item, you're not going to get the money for this item. If I'm not being allowed to say why, just wait till you're deprived of this money. And that's a lesson to the people watching on Channel Thirty-Five. They let you speak, but they don't let you say what you want to say. For identification purposes only, Daniel Gus, speaking only for myself, I have the number two most read article this week on City Watch, and I'm writing a very interesting article right now about the maker of this motion, Mr. Price, who doesn't want to answer questions. Same thing, okay, so this happened in 2016. Okay, well, if fifty thousand dollars in 2012 didn't work, why are you offering twenty, fifty thousand dollars for a crime, uh, or a murder that took place in August of 2016? This doesn't make sense. If you want to actually get information, you need to make the reward commensurate with the length that you've been trying to solve this crime. It doesn't make any sense. But again, thank you, Mr. Wesson, for those two minutes.
Okay, I want to give you your other minute for your general public comment.
Okay. Daniel Gus, speaking for myself, I have the number one article on City Watch LA about the worst McMansion in LA in Mr. Rue's district with a subterranean garage. That's remarkable, thank you Paul Coretts for that. I have articles in the work. Mr. Galperin, the city controller, won't admit it, but he is finally investigating fire inspector fraud at the, at the LAFD. He won't admit it. I will have a story out about that. And the reason why it's going to cost you guys is because Mr. Galperin didn't wake up to the fraud until now. And two days ago, the city of Los Angeles was sued by several of the perpetrators of the alleged fire fraud. And regarding Mr. Price, Mr. Price's wife was removed from a project development the other day because she did not tell people who she's trying to get out of low-income housing that she's married to a council member. And by the way, when was Mr. Price divorced from his first wife?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have to vote on reconsideration on Items Six and Eight. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Now we will vote-
Twelve eyes.
Thank you, now we will vote on those items again. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Candido, I just got a card from you on Ten.
I, I thought I had other numbers on there. In regards to the rewards, uh, for these crimes, we need, we need to make sure that those, uh, are enforced and that the people who have suffered here, uh, see justice there. But you know, Mr. President, you know what bothers me about these people that wrap themselves with the American flag and think they're more American than the rest of us? By the way, my great-great-great-grandfather came here in sixteen-ten, Baldazar Modest, and the other part of me is Navajo Indian. So these so-called Americans who wrap themselves with the American flag and say they have a right to carry a gun because they need to protect themselves, but yet go around and spread the worst evil in the world when they use bigotry and hate when they're outside of this podium right here. That's what they do, they go out there and tell you about how hateful, and how much hate is to the, all these individuals who come here to this country trying to, uh, to make it here in America. I don't care where you are, you're from, if you come here and you abide by the laws and you try to achieve the American dream, you have a right to be here. But these individuals, Mr. Trump and some of these other individuals who wrap themselves with the American flag, they do nothing but destroy-
Thank, thank, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, why don't we recess the regular, go into the special?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weeza, Coretts, Kocorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rue, Wesson, twelve members present, and, uh, quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call up Mr. Gus, Items Twelve and Thirteen, and then I'm going to call up Mr. Herman, Items Twelve and Thirteen. Yes, sir.
Okay. Where's my time, please? Two minutes, okay. I'm going to first address Item Thirteen. You guys are in such a world of hurt, are you aware of current events? Are you aware of current events? You're against the nominations of these, uh, Trump cabinet members? Are you aware that some of them aren't nominees anymore? Are you aware that Rex Tillerson is already Secretary of State? What are you protesting? Do you just come up with these asinine concepts and say, oh, we're going to be against these nominees? They're not nominees anymore. Rex Tillerson is already on his first overseas trip for Donald Trump. What the hell are you protesting? Elaine Chao, Secretary of, what was, what is it, Transportation? Elaine Chao is in the President's Cabinet, she's not a nominee. What the hell are you guys protesting? By the way, do you know, do you know the vote that Elaine Chao was approved by, by the US Senate? Elaine Chao, let's be clear about this in case the media's watching. Elaine Chao, the current Secretary of Transportation, who's on the job, who's not a nominee, she was approved by the United States Senate ninety-three to six, and that's a whole hell of a lot of Democrat senators. Who are you protesting? Elaine Chao's in the Cabinet, she was approved by the Senate ninety-three to six, and you're against it. What other, what else are you doing? You're against Ben Carson? Well, let me tell you who voted in favor of Ben Carson. Massachusetts Senator Elizabeth Warren voted in favor of Ben Carson, and you're against Ben Carson. Who else voted in favor of Ben Carson? From Ohio? Sherrod Brown? Sherrod Brown, you're, you don't agree with Sherrod Brown? That's fantastic. Tom Price passed the first round, you guys are so out of touch with current events, it's amazing.
Thank you, thank you, so, thank you, Mr. Herman.
For the record, Robin Hood, so as you know, in Item Thirteen, for the record, seventeen zero zero two S nineteen, the gentleman speaker before me was speaking the truth. How do we reach an agreement for consideration and solutions to the problems that impact our lives relative to establishing a city position? Fuck you, gently, because the bottom line is this, the forty-fifth president is going to take away all those federal dollars, slow down those state dollars, until you take an action to represent the forty-fifth president in which no one here, like myself, has to say a name to. Voters voted, and now we have Jeff Sessions to head the Department of Justice. Since his appointment, since his appointment, the impact of the forty-fifth president has brought an alert, and that alert is to warn the American people. We're going to make America great once again and once and for all. If we die fighting for every inch, Brandenburg versus Ohio nineteen sixty-nine, we will fight for every fucking inch like Americans. And fuck Kocorian the goat, stop interrupting my public comment.
Stay on this topic.
Now on Item Number Twelve, fools. Gently speaking, once again, fuck you CD7 for communication of the facilities committee relative to license agreements with four nonprofit operations. Bunch of scumbags, you have a bunch of HHH, Herb, Hilda, and Hitler putting the bitch, bitch, bitch to lunch.
Thank you, thank you. If I can get Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, uh, please come forward, Twelve and Thirteen. And after Mr. Walsh, Mr. Spindler, I believe.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number Twelve, this concerns nonprofit operators for satellite family source centers, that's more of the homeless bureaucracy. Number Thirteen is the most important one. There's only one Republican on the city council, and that's Mr. Englander. And Englander got his ass out of the building because he doesn't want to vote for this, and he doesn't have the courage to vote no. Now, you don't have any courage either because this is very easy to vote against Trump's nominees. This is a list that was compiled weeks ago with people who've already been approved. You don't see the mayor getting involved in this because the mayor wants to run, uh, in the entire state for statewide office, and he doesn't want to get in trouble with the Republicans, so his little white ass, pretty little white ass is not going to be involved in this. And when he signs it, he's signing his warrant to lose the election. Rick Perry, Elaine Chao, I mean, and incidentally, none of you are going to speak against it because you have Republicans. You're acting as if, uh, these aren't all Republicans and this is Trump's, uh, see, I'm no fan of Trump. I'm no fan of Trump, but he, he won the election and now he has the right to appoint whoever the hell he wants to appoint. And then you get up there on your high horse and tell him, you're all wrong, you're all wrong. Well, if you hadn't run a shithole like, uh, Clinton, he would have lost, he would have lost to Bernie.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler.
Oh, look what we have here. The only Republican leaves the room, bitch, Englander, yes. Oh, no, I'm talking about Council creep. Now, here we go. I like this. Jeff Sessions, Department of Justice, he's our new Attorney General. That means he can indict. He's going to get you guys, and he knows now it's personal. Because what you've done is you have personally attacked the United States Attorney General -elect, and you've told the Department of Justice you will do everything to fight them. You are the enemy of the Department of Justice in Washington DC, the city council. You have declared war against the federal government, and you're very powerful people, you're very powerful people. You can do it. You can do it, and I encourage you to do so. I have met a long time ago with my father, Jefferson Bartholomew Sessions, when he tried to become a, a federal judge. He was raising money. And the Democrats accused him of being a racist, and he lost that seat as a federal judge, and then he became a US Senator. Why did he take this job? Because he's going to kick this city's ass and start cleaning the swamp out in downtown City Hall and the LA County Board of Supervisors. That's why he took the job. He's going to do it in Detroit, he's going to do it in Philly, he's going to do it in Chicago because Jeff Sessions knows these big cities are criminal enterprises and they're stealing billions of dollars and they're not building affordable housing. You lose again.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler, followed by Ms. Peirman. Come on now.
Again, folks, you're dealing with the US Constitution, you have a state constitution and a city con, a city charter, you have no constitutionality to affect anything at the federal level, and as far as I'm concerned, they're going to come and prosecute you, absolutely. You're against the law, period. You are committing sedition against the federal. Okay, you take an oath on the Bible in your office when you come here, you're violating the law. I'm hoping that this is going to be a, a big lesson to anybody running for public office. We're going to hold everybody accountable and thank God for Donald Trump. I love the guy, I write him every day, bless his heart, he's, I, he's the, he's the most beautiful person that's ever come along in two hundred and forty years of our country. Okay, so what we need to do is to let you know that the Democrats in California cannot take California away from the U, from the US, the United States. We're going to take this state back from the Democrats. Once you're gone, you're going to be-
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
Okay.
And you should go to Item Twelve now, you already spent your minute on Item Thirteen.
Okay, number Twelve. The not, number Twelve? Okay, um, I can't remember anymore. Okay, it's the satellite-
You're disrupting, just let her speak.
Okay, all right. Uh, Donald Trump is going to fix our, our communications here, cybersecurity, and therefore we're going to have to stop the nonprofits from taking all the money from the taxpayers. After all, Prop H, you're going to be taxing us for this, and that's not right to give it to the nonprofits and to rip us off and then make us homeless and bring in communism.
Thank you, so if I could have Ms.-
Communism.
Ms. Peirman, and, uh, then, uh, Candido, one minute on Twelve.
I'm back again. Eric Garcetti says, if number Twelve is on the agenda, must be good. So I don't know anything about number Twelve, so I say, you're going to pass it anyway, so who cares? So, let's go back now, I'm going to go on to number Thirteen. Okay, number Thirteen, is, this is something that the Democrat communists like so much. Let's just go totally against anything that Donald Trump has. Yay! Just totally go against it. It doesn't matter who they are, it doesn't matter if he- It doesn't matter if you got the women here, the Department of Transportation, because we have a big trouble in transportation over here with all our buses not running right. But if it's Donald Trump, it must be bad, so Elaine Chao must be bad too. So, and Ben Carson? But I like Ben Carson. He's a great man. I've seen him, he's the most soft-spoken, considerate man, and if, I really, I really like him, and he's on there anyway, all these people are on there anyway. He must be bad. If it's Donald Trump, he must be bad.
Okay, you gotta go back to item 12. You can only spend a minute on item.
So I just want to say that this is ridiculous, this ending, this is ridiculous. You can't do anything about it. Let's take care of this city and the problems that we have here and not waste our time with stuff that has nothing to do with you.
Okay, you're off topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Candido, item 12.
Mr. President, it was supposed to be 12 and 13. I apologize, and thank you very much for giving me the time to speak, because I really don't like to be, to speak. I'm here mainly to learn. But when I, you know, I love these individuals. I love them because I've been around this council since 1989. I don't come as often as I used to, but I enjoy what takes place here. But when I keep hearing that my councilman, Mr. Mitch Englander, who they really don't know, because I live up in Port Ranch, I live next to that oil well, I live, and my wife has suffered because of that, and they don't know what he's done for our community.
You gotta stay on the subject, Candido, you gotta-
I was, President, but again-
You have to stay on the subject.
He didn't step out of here because he's a coward, he stepped out of here because-
You gotta stay on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject mattered, and I apologize, I don't remember, but again, I hope that the people that come here-
Okay, thank you, Candido, thank you, but you gotta, I can't let you speak, you gotta, I gotta hold you accountable like everybody else. So, if I can have- We're gonna vote on item 12, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, Ann Jobe on item 13, and do I have a Wendy, I can't quite make out the last name, and Elena Semper. Yes, one minute.
I'm Ann Jobe, speaking only for myself. Elections have consequences. Therefore, I did not expect to like Trump's nominations and appointments. However, I did expect him to make responsible nominations and appointments. In light of the fact that some of these on the list have been seated, I would request that you revisit this list and decide which ones remaining that you want to oppose. And I also ask that when President Trump does something that we can approve of, like infrastructure, please have on the agenda items supporting him. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Elena Semper. I'm here to express immense gratitude for item number 13. I'm well-educated in fossil fuel harm and our 100% clean energy options. I'm a trained climate reality project leader. In this day and age, we still see dirty energy companies throughout Los Angeles, but we should be seeing clean, safe solar farms and windmills. We can with political will. President Trump's executive orders are short-sighted and will be redoubling our efforts to stop these expensive and unnecessary projects designed to enrich polluters instead of putting us first. Also, thank you very much for supporting Senator Henry Stern's SB 146 to keep Aliso Canyon shut down until completion of the root cause investigation. Thank you.
I'm Wendy Dzoritz from Council District 5. My city council member is Paul Coretts. I'm here to support the resolution to oppose the nomination of Senator Sessions and other dangerous cabinet appointments. I am here both as a constituent and as a representative of Ben the Ark, a progressive Jewish organization that works for social justice. Senator Sessions is against everything I believe in. Civil rights, voting rights, immigration reform, and a woman's right to choose what to do with her own body. During the campaign, Sessions supported Trump's call for a ban on all Muslim immigration, and now he supports the ban from seven primarily Muslim countries. He is not a just man. He should not be the Attorney General of our United States, and I thank you for this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Coretts, before I call you, I want to amend this to remove Ms. Chao, and I need a sec, Mr. Kocorian, seconds. Mr. Coretts, do you want to close on this, or just have us vote?
Yes, and people have said we should give Donald Trump a chance, and we gave him a chance, and enough is enough already. He's scoured the country to find the worst possible pick for almost every cabinet position, and he found them and nominated them. Someone who's anti-public education to head the, to become the Secretary of Education, someone who's anti-social justice to head the Department of Justice, someone who's anti-labor to become the Labor Secretary. And at a time when worldwide climate change's devastating impacts are being felt daily by real human beings and costing cities and countries billions of dollars, then he puts Exxon and Mobil in charge of the State Department. It just gets worse and worse. His choices are wrong, his choices are irresponsible, their actions will have severe negative impacts upon the people of our great city and country, and every one is conflict-ridden, and despite a number of requests have not been vetted by the United States Government Ethics Office. And I want to add a friendly amendment. We neglected to include opposing Steve Mnuchin's nomination to Treasury Secretary. Putting a former Goldman Sachs banker and hedge fund manager who ran a foreclosure machine during the fiscal crisis in charge of the Treasury is just one more insane appointment. He failed to disclose nearly $100 million of his assets to the Senate Finance Committee, and has earned every right to be on this list as well. I ask your high votes to stick up for our city and our country.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Next speaker is Mr. Sadio.
Mr. Coretts, I thank you for this. This is hardly anything we could do more appropriate. This is a warning. A cabinet and a team led by Stefan Bannon is dangerous for our nation. We seem to be following the bouncing ball and not looking carefully at what's taking place in Washington DC. Placing Stefan Bannon on the National Security Council, removing experienced, nonpartisan intelligence and security leaders, and placing him on it is a real danger that borders on a coup of our government. And so I thank you for your vigilance, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. You're absolutely right. When you think about, for example, us, a city of immigrants, us, a state of immigrants, how we embrace the optimism, the hard work, the entrepreneurship of immigrants, and then you think about the president's efforts to bring people and surround himself with people like Sessions, like Bannon, like Chris Corbok. Hardly anything could be worse for our nation. We are on the edge of peril, and we need to be clear that when these matters were brought forward, that we were clear about the consequences and that we were sure to make the nation know that we could see what was going on. So I thank you for your leadership and your insight in bringing this resolution to our attention.
Okay, as we stand, members, we have an amendment that was prepared by Mr. Weston, seconded by Mr. Kocorian. We still don't have a second on Mr. Coretts' friendly amendment. Mr. O'Farrell, thank you. That item is before us as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Madam President, would Council like to adjourn the special and convene the regular meeting?
Yes, let's do that, and we have two additional items on the regular agenda. So let's move on to item nine. There are no cards on this item, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, let's move on to item 10. There are no more cards on this item as well, so let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? I just have a quick announcement. We're continuing our toll drive for our human trafficking victims. I think I want to thank you very, very much. We've done a terrific job. We have a number of items that have been delivered to our offices, and also thank you very much for the monetary donations. I appreciate it. We have a couple of more days to go, so thank you so much, gentlemen. Any other announcements? Can we all please rise for adjourned motions, please? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Duck Young Park, a pioneer in Los Angeles Korean-American community. Mr. Duck Young Park, also known as, Mrs. Duck Young Park, also known as Anna, arrived in Los Angeles with her husband Peter Park in October 1965. Mr. Park was a diplomat assigned to the Korean Consul General in Los Angeles. Over the course of the next 50 years, Mrs. and Mr. Park played an instrumental role in the Korean-American community in Los Angeles. In 1966, the couple helped found the first Korean Catholic congregation at St. Gregory's Catholic Church in Koreatown. The pioneer group still exists to this day and continues to provide community service in numerous churches. Mrs. Park passed away peacefully in her sleep on the morning of January 10, 2017, amongst the comfort of her family the day after celebrating her 95th birthday. She'll be missed dearly by her three sons, daughters, eight grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Any other adjourned motions? To my right, seeing none, to my left. Okay, thank you very much. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend.